And welcome to the zoning board of appeals for the village of East Hampton Friday, July 9th. Before we start, I'd like to take a moment to thank Craig Humphrey for his dedicated service to the zoning board, which began in 2011 as an alternate and then as a member in 2013. Thanks, Craig. Also served on the planning board for two years before joining the zoning board. So, thank you. So, we have the minutes of June 11th, 2021. Can I have a motion?
So moved. Two down.
Second.
Ball in favor?
Aye.
We have two applications withdrawn. 13 Sarah's Way LLC. And we have Michael Kretschmer and Chuck Thomas, also 35 McGurk Street. Now, we have four determinations today, and I'll read them, and you can find everything on the village website if need be. In the application of 25 Cross Highway LLC, 25 Crossroads Suffolk County Tax Map Number 13-4-17, to construct a patio is denied and to maintain a shed is provided. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Pam, can you poll the board?
Mr. McGurk?
No.
Mr. Mullen?
No.
Mr. O'Connell?
No.
Mr. Humphrey?
No.
I'm sorry, Mr. Barrett?
In the application of Thomas and Jennifer Sheehan, 25 Ian Lane Suffolk County Tax Map Number 3-3-5, to install swimming pool equipment is approved. May I have a motion?
Make a motion.
Second?
Second.
Pam?
Mr. McGurk?
Yes.
Mr. McMullen?
Yes.
Mr. O'Connell?
Yes.
Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
Mr. Rose?
Yes.
And the third determination in the application of Donna Collins and Peter Collins III, 22 and 20 Conquillan Terrace Suffolk County Tax Map Number 1-4-7 and 1-4-8, to legalize a pool house with an existing garage is approved. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Pam?
Mr. McGurk?
Yes.
Mr. McMullen?
Yes.
Mr. O'Connell?
Yes.
Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
Mr. Rose?
Yes.
In the application of Amir G. Gunlap and Linda Gunlap, 149 Main Street Suffolk County Tax Map Number 8-3-18, to construct patios and walkways is denied. A motion, please?
Motion.
Second? Pam?
Mr. McGurk?
No.
Mr. Mullen?
No.
Mr. O'Connell?
No.
Mr. Humphrey?
No.
Mr. Rose?
No, I just, no means voting yes for the resolution. Okay.
You're voting to deny the application.
Got it.
No means yes.
We have the continuing, go ahead.
Can we go back to 25 Cross Highway LLC? Were you approving the shed and denying the?
Yes.
Okay.
As set forth in the written decision.
Okay, just checking, thank you.
The continuing hearing for 106 Briar Patch Road, Jonathan?
Hi, John Tarbit for the applicant. Happy to be back live. So, this application started in April, was the first time we appeared by Zoom with the board. At that time, the board expressed reservations regarding the grading that was necessary for a driveway that would come to the house. They also, you also expressed reservations regarding the size of the pool. We resubmitted, actually a pretty major redesign. We flipped the entire house so that the driveway would come in the other side, which allowed us to not do any grading for the driveway or on that north side of the property. And it also allowed us to keep the entire driveway completely outside of wetland jurisdiction, which is a pretty big improvement over what's there now. There's about 2,000 square feet of driveway within wetland jurisdiction right now, and that's all to be removed. There was actually no May meeting, or at least we didn't attend. We came to the June meeting, and the board asked for us to beef up the revegetation plan, to relocate the pool fence, and for more details on de-watering. With regard to de-watering, I just wanted to mention that we don't need to de-water. We have a test hole that's based on a actual, which shows highest expected groundwater, and it's only at time of highest expected groundwater that our foundation will be in the water. And that's based on real data. There's actually a well that is monitored by the company that did the test hole on George Capon, so they actually know what highest expected groundwater is. So, we know that, so that's real data, and we know that we can build this house without having to de-water. The board still wanted us to do a de-watering plan just in case that became necessary. It's important to point out that unlike other areas with high groundwater, George Capon gets let out twice a year, so it's fully possible to work around the letting of George Capon to avoid having to go into groundwater. And that is our intention. So, those are the changes we made.
When they let the pond out, what date, you know, is it May or is it in the fall or what, when do they?
I, maybe, maybe Billy has a better idea. I know it's twice a year, spring and fall, and I think it's somewhat variable after that. So, with it being twice a year, we're very confident that we can, again, it's only if the pond is full and it's at the highest possible level that we would have an issue. It is also worth pointing out that the existing house is there now that sits 15 feet from the pond, has a basement that's got, every time I've been there, the basement's been dry and stuff is stored there. So, we really don't think we're going to need a de-watering plan, but we supplied one because the board asked for it. Jim? Good? There has been some spirited opposition from the neighbors, many letters written. We've responded to those letters. I won't hash all those details out again now. I will point out that if you're reviewing the application, probably the two most important factors are character of the neighborhood and whether it will do any detriment to the natural feature that's sought to be protected. We have asked for no variances from the neighbors. That was actually something we decided early on. We knew we didn't want to ask for any dimensional variances from any neighbors, so the house was designed with that in mind. As a result, we proposed a house that was 20% smaller than permitted GFA, 50% less coverage, and, excuse me, that's very in line with, and in keeping with, the character of the neighborhood. None of the other houses on Briar Patch Road would, they're all pre-existing non-conforming and likely larger than gross floor area, so we'd be smaller than any other house, and I shouldn't say any other house, but most of their houses on Briar Patch Road.
And you're retreating from the pond?
We're retreating from the pond. So, just to recap that briefly, the existing house is 15 feet from the pond. We proposed no structures within 75 feet of the pond. We've proposed a 50-foot scenic easement. Again, if everybody on George Capon proposed a 50-foot scenic easement and a 75-foot no fertilization zone, it would go a lot towards improving the quality of the water in George Again, we've been here, this is our third time, I don't want to rehash everything we've spoken about previously, so if there's any questions, I'll answer them, but otherwise.
Anybody? I think you're good. Billy, do you want to make any comments?
Sure.
About the de-watering and Vinnie?
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board, Billy Hayjack for the village of East Hampton. So, I reviewed the resubmitted revegetation plan. They did bolster the plan with additional woody vegetation, and they added eight proposed native trees, I think it's maple and black tupelo, which was a request of the board. The issue of, or the question of de-watering came up when the village consulting engineer reviewed the original submission. And what the applicant proposed, or what was set forth in their construction protocol, was a plan that timed the excavation and the installation of the foundation with the letting of the pond. And the, if you look at their test hole data, the basement is not within groundwater, it's the highest expected groundwater table when the pond swells where there could be an issue. And the consulting engineer recommended a protocol be in place should conditions change while they're excavating. So, it's a contingency plan essentially, just to ensure that the de-watering could be accomplished. If they have to de-water, they will have to obtain a New York State DEC permit for that. It's all regulated by the DEC. My understanding, or based on prior approvals that have been issued by the DEC for de-watering, is that the de-watering can only occur when, after the pond is let anyway, so it might be kind of a moot point regardless, because I don't know if the DEC is going to allow de-watering when the pond is swollen and full. So, I did submit a report to the board yesterday, just a brief memo addressing one of the comments that were suggested by one of the neighbors, which suggested that the map may not accurately depict all of the wetlands within proximity to the property, and I just wanted to provide the board with documentation. I'm fairly confident that the wetland boundaries that are shown on the survey are all accurate. So, if you have any specific questions for me, I'd be happy to answer them.
Mr. Rose?
So, one of the submissions, the more recent submissions by someone representing, I believe it's the neighbors, made, raised the issue of whether the increased use of the property would counteract the upgrade of the new and improved septic system and the relocation to a further, is there, can you speak to that point?
In the buffer, right?
Right. In the, right, there was a, the question was, is, how does, how do the various elements of the application interact?
So, in terms of the buffer, right now, there is no, the existing limits of clearing or the existing cleared areas, there's no restriction on the application of fertilizers. They can landscape, re-landscape, apply fertilizers, and manage their turf lawn as they wish, install irrigation, you know, they can manage it how they like. The proposed project, and the existing clearing extends to within, I believe it's 17 or 15 feet of the wetland edge. The proposed project, as a comparison, proposes a 50-foot revegetated buffer, and as I indicated, it includes woody vegetation, a mixture of grasses and trees. They are proposing to not fertilize within 75 feet of the wetland, and the last hearing I had recommended that be reinforced in some form of a covenant, so that it puts future owners on notice. In terms of the septic influence, I believe the existing system, as per the survey, consists of a single leaching pool, and it's located roughly 80 feet from wetlands. My understanding is that the existing residence contains four bedrooms, so without proper septic treatment, you know, I can't quantify the amount of nitrogen, you know, right now that is being released, but the proposed plan places the new septic system beyond 200 feet from wetlands, which complies with the village regulation. And they propose a wood chip tank, which provides additional polishing, removes pharmaceuticals, things that might not normally get treated through a standard septic system, and it's an innovative alternative septic system. And in general, IA systems are, have proven to treat nitrogen about 60 to 80% reductions compared to a conventional septic system. And bear in mind, this is not, what exists is not a conventional system because it's just a, I think it's just a cesspool. So, my suspicion, and I, this is, it's that, there's, the treatment is going to be far, far superior than 80% would be my guess.
Thanks.
Yep.
Anybody else like to speak? Mr. Matthews?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Brian Matthews, Matthews, Kirsten Cooley, 241 Panago Road, East Hampton, New York, on behalf of the Casson, Tishman, and Rotasi families, the owners of 126, 112, and 100 Briar Patch Road, as well, Ms. Tishman also owns the Briar Patch Road itself. You know, as John mentioned, as we all know, this matter's been on before the board a few times now, and so the board is, you know, acutely aware of the fact that our clients have significant concerns and objections to the project as it's still proposed. You know, and contrary to the statements that were advanced in a letter, I believe, that Mr. Tarbit filed yesterday, I don't think it would be accurate to characterize those objections as generalized community opposition. They're not standing here saying, "Don't build on this property. We don't want, we don't want any building. We don't want anything to happen here." That's the type of stuff that would be characterized as just general community opposition. Instead, what has been clear throughout is that their objections and their concerns relate to the fact that the size, the scope, and location of what is being proposed is simply too intense for this heavily constrained lot. And their assertions, and our assertions throughout, have been that the benefit to the applicant, and the benefit, or the, I should say, the benefit of relocating the approximately 1,700 square foot house further back from George Capon that it presently, that it presently exists, albeit only to 75 feet, which is only half as far back as would be required under the code, and replacing it with 6,000-plus square feet, eight bedrooms, full basement, two-car garage, terraces, courtyards, and a waterside pool, that the benefits of relocating that house simply get the detriments to that, the intensity of that infrastructure, if you will, just far out, the detriments related to that just far outweigh any intended benefits of the relocation of the house, the removal of the existing house. And it's just too much of an impact on the neighborhood and too much of an impact on an or a fragile George Capon, as everybody knows. So, put simply, as we put in our letters and we've stated previously, that what they're proposing here is simply incompatible with the lot that they have and the constraints that's on it, that are on it. It's a simple fact, and I'm sure John does, and everybody in this room tells their clients all the time that not every, not every lot can fit every amenity, and I think this is kind of the perfect example of that. You know, we respect, and to the extent we respectfully refer the board to the letters that we've submitted dated, I think, April 8th and June 11th, the testimony both by our office and our clients at the prior public hearings for the reasons why this application, still as it stands today, simply fails to meet the variance standards. It simply can't be said by way of example that the variances that it's seeking are the minimum variances necessary. There are a number of avenues available to this applicant to simply do less and to do more in line with what this lot, with what this lot allows. They can have a smaller house. It can be moved further back. You don't have to have a full basement. You don't have to have a waterside pool. All of these alternatives should be explored. And so, what I want to do right now, as of May, is turn the microphone over to Mike Bonchi, who's the consultant recently retained by our clients, to address some of the de-watering plan and some of the other issues that he raised in his letter yesterday. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you.
Honorable board members.
Pam, you want to swear your name in?
I'm sorry, sure.
Please state your name and address for the record.
Michael Bonchi, Northport, New York.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing above the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Honorable members, it's glad to see everybody back. This is my first physical appearance at a hearing. I've been doing this for 41 years, but it's been a while, a year and a half or two years. So, if you see any rust falling off, please ignore that. I'll sweep it up when I'm finished. But anyway, as indicated, my name is Michael Bonchi. I'm a principal at WBL and Associates. We're specialists in natural resources, and we're here, I'm here to comment on the application pending before you for 106 Briar Patch Road, and I'm here on behalf of a number of the neighbors, and my contact among those neighbors is Lynn Tishman at 126 Briar Patch Road. I submitted two letters yesterday. It was a little disjointed because of the fact that I haven't not had that much time. It was retained recently and is several hundred pages, you know, going up towards 300 pages now of record, so it took some reviewing. And so, what I have provided are what I would call preliminary comments, my initial comments in trying to get through a good portion of the submissions at least once. And the reason I broke it into the two pieces was because of the two separate submissions that the applicant had. I figured, let me deal with the old, older stuff first and then newer stuff second. So, the first submission is a more general submission. As Billy was saying before, it raised initially some wetland concerns, that there was presence of some wetland trees that do occur in wetlands in the northern ditch area, or ditch or swale in this case, and that there was a wetland existing on Number 97, which is sort of catty corner to this property, and also that the edge of that wetland immediately butts the road. Billy's taken care of that in the record, but I'll circle back to the Number 97 wetland to begin with. I know he indicated that you folks had already focused on the northern swale area. So, anyway, getting to the sanitary system, I guess it was raised just now, they are in fact doing IA system with a wood chip tank, which is a good thing, and it's being set further back from the wetlands, which is also a good thing. And that will result in decreased nitrogen concentration in the F1. But the question is whether or not the total nitrogen loading from the sanitary system will in fact be less than is occurring now. And my point is, I just don't see any calculation to that effect. Whereas the claim has been made, I didn't see any calculations, and I think that for full information on the board, that you should have a calculation of total nitrogen loading on the property. Again, just because there's a decreased concentration, if there's increased flow in the sanitary system, you may actually wind up with more nitrogen from the sanitary system. Then, the next thing is that, you know, as you guys are well aware, you folks are well aware, you know, according to Section 278, the ZBA shall determine the minimum variance that it shall deem necessary. And what that really means is alternatives. I always put that as an alternatives analysis. And they have decreased the size of the pool. There's been some changes, like the driveway flipping over, and that's gotten them out of the northern area and the need for retaining wall in the northern area. But on the other hand, there are a number of things that sort of pop out when you just look at the plan itself. Number one is, why does the pool have to stick out perpendicular to the terrace in the house? Why can't it be parallel to the house and therefore increase, again, the setback from the wetlands? Could it be embedded in the terrace? Particularly on the southern end, you'll see the terrace widens out considerably at that southern, southeast, southwestern corner of the house. And so, why can't it be embedded in that particular terrace? And again, that takes that structure and then places it that much further with the wetlands and becomes a lesser variance that they're requesting with regard to the pool. Another one is that if you look at the architect's plans, I think they go from 13 feet, five and three-quarters inches at the end of the parking structure, or the, not structure, but at grade parking that they're planning on the southern side of the lot now. And then, by the time you get to the house, the house is at 16 feet, five and three-quarters inches. So, that means it's a three-foot rise. That's four steps, you know, four standard nine-inch steps. So, why do you need 55 feet to go three, to go three feet up or four steps? So, I think there's a, there's a chance there for an analysis of an alternative that would have a lesser approach, you know, to, to the, to the house, from the parking to the house, and the house would consequently move west. The second one, or the last one, is obviously the number of bedrooms. I understand it's eight, although it's kind of hard, and again, I haven't only looked, every time I read descriptions of the property, I've never been able to find the number of bedrooms. I know it's in there. I understand it's eight. But in looking at the architectural drawings, I wasn't able to get there. But assuming that it's eight bedrooms, again, you're going from a four-bedroom house to an eight-bedroom house, which is the nitrogen thing, but you could, you know, the possibility of having fewer bedrooms is another alternative, which then decreases also the size of the sanitary system. Because the sanitary system is based, and its sizing and the number of pools involved and everything else is based on the number of bedrooms. With regard to, another thing that I think should be considered is the roadway itself. It's owned separately. From what I understand, it's owned by the same owners as 126 Briar Patch Road. It's a private road. It's what I would call sort of a very light gravel road with a narrow carriageway, so it's like a 3/8 inch pea gravel. It's not like a crushed bluestone or 5/8ths or 7, 3/4 crushed bluestone. And so, it's kind of, kind of light surface and then a narrow roadbed. And importantly, I think the wetland on Number 97 actually comes pretty much right up to the roadbed, that, the western boundary of that wetland. And so, I think there are several concerns with regard to that roadway, is that it, kind of like the construction plan, should have a maintenance plan, should have a soil erosion and sediment control plan, and then, if necessary, a restoration plan. Because, yes, the lot has a right to ingress and egress, I'm not an attorney, but there should be a serviceable road when the construction is finished. Again, not unusual, too, for consideration. And in this case, there's a broader context of the fact that the wetland is right there. The edge of the wetland is right there, and so that's more of an environmental concern in addition to an access or a utility concern. The second submission I made was in regard to the de-watering plan, and, you know, this is driven by the applicant's own drawings and the applicant's own statements and data, that this would be the high seasonal groundwater. So, when you look at the, with, at the drawings, the architectural drawings, what you see is the footing, and then the groundwater level's about 1 and 3/4 feet or two feet above the level of the footing. So, that's what we're going with. So, that, to me, that says de-watering plan, which the board has already taken cognizance of. So, what I did was I took a look at the de-watering plan, and I came up with a couple of concerns. First of all, I want to also point out, in the original application in October of 2020, Page 2, Section 3, there is a question, will de-watering be involved? And the answer is no. There's another question on Page 3 that says, are pilings involved? And the answer is no, and the architectural drawings show pilings. So, there may be some discrepancies in the original application that have to be at least rectified or somehow married up with what the submissions are at this point and the information that you have at this point. Okay, a couple of things on the de-watering plan. Number one, there were no percolation tests on site, so generalized percolation information was used. I think there should be some perk tests on site if you're going to have a recharge basin. Secondly, the hydraulic conductivity that they give in the analysis is 350 linear horizontal feet a day. So, we have Number 97, we have the wetland there, which is considerably less than 350 feet away from this. And now, they indicate, okay, it's going to be, you know, seasonal, or it's going to go with or without the pond being let. We don't know that. It's possible. But they also have 150-day schedule provided in the de-watering plan. So, that's what, four and a half months? Five months? So, the question is, well, is you thinking you're going to have to pump for five months straight through, 24/7? What's the plan here in terms of, if we do have to go to this, what they consider to be a contingency, but what the drawing shows a necessity? And again, you folks have already picked up on that. What it shows in the K2 is that the basin that they propose conflicts with the areas of vegetation clearing. In other words, there's a portion, a good chunk of the basin, I'd say about a third of it on its kind of northwest corner, that goes into areas on the site plan, the current site plan, the one they just submitted, that's shown as no vegetation disturbance. So, if you do go to this contingency plan, that changes the vegetation disturbance on the property. It also shows the basin, but doesn't show a work area around it, too. So, there may be a wider area involved. The berms, or the basin is not just a hole in the ground, it also has elevated berms above grade. So, the question becomes, are those berms, it has a proposed pump switch, a float switch, but are the berms protected from a blowout? What happens if the pump switch doesn't work? We get downpours like we did the last day or so. Does that, and the pump switch, for some reason, is off, or the pump, you know, there's no supply of power or whatever, when the water goes up on those berms, which are meant to protect from overflow, you know, when they become saturated, are they going to blow out? This is something you have to consider when you do any kind of recharge perm or any kind of holding basin, when it goes, particularly when it goes above ground level. The materials and storage, it's a pretty considerable size, I don't know if you got, folks have looked at it, but it's a pretty considerable-sized basin. It's not small. So, my question is, what's happening with the materials? And to recycle back to the roadway, just as an example, on the roadway and its usage, the excess materials on the architectural drawings is 1,329 cubic yards that are going to be leaving the site. That's the excess fill at this point. So, fine, 1,300 yards is leaving the site, but it's got to leave on trucks. That's at least 40, 30 cubic yard trucks, maybe more, and then 80 round trips. And so, it's going to, again, a lot of loading on that sort of lightly gravelled carriageway at the moment that happens to occur, again, right next to wetland, the wetland on Number 97. Finally, is the DEC, if they go for, do go for a DEC permit, and they need to go for a DEC permit, which they will if they need to de-water, because the quantities are just substantial here, that the DEC generally likes diffusion wells and does not like recharge basins. And I didn't see any consideration or calculation of what that would involve in placing diffusion wells and, and what kind of mounding would occur, that sort of thing, with a diffusion well rather than a recharge basin situation. So, anyway, what I tried to do was just go through the application and look for confirmation of the claims made by the applicant, look for potential conflicts, so that the board could be fully informed in regard to making its decision. So, anyway, we have those two submissions. If you have any questions, you can even happen to answer them. So, I'll leave it at that point.
I'm going to ask Vinnie, Vinnie, the roadway, it's private. We have nothing to do with us.
We have no jurisdiction.
Has nothing to do with us, the roadway, so they're going to have to work that out amongst the neighbors.
Okay, so what you're saying is that would be a private agreement amongst the neighbors?
Whatever it is, it's not us.
It's not us, so, you know, and then, the sanitary system, Billy, the calculations, do we need calculations on the? And then the sanitary system, Billy, the calculations, do we need calculations on the -- you want to?
I mean--
You're going from a straight cesspool, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, you're going from a straight cesspool--
It's got to be better.
--in sand that's going into the pond--
I don't know that you necessarily--
--to having, you know, an actual low nitrogen system with a wood chip polisher, even with the additional bedrooms, it just seems like it's common sense that you're better off with that septic system with the 75-foot non-fertilization and the re-vedge of 50 feet along the pond when you--
Consider it as a whole.
Yeah, when you consider it as a whole. I mean, I'm not an engineer, I'm not an environmental engineer, but it seems fairly straightforward.
I'm just a quantitative kind of person. I like to see numbers, you know, particularly when claims are made--
That's what you do.
And it's what I do. And also, it is not unusual, I've seen those calculations done before for other properties doing pretty much the same thing. Thank you.
Okay.
Any further questions?
Jimmy?
I have nothing else.
Great. Thanks for your time and consideration.
Thank you. Mr. Grimes, are you here on this application, or are you here on another application?
I'm here in the capacity of the trustees--
Okay.
--so I've got no comments on this application.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else have any comments?
Just a second.
Yes, and then both have it.
Just quickly on the road. I understand that it's privately owned road, and it's not in front of the board per se, but just with regards to the idea of a repair, maintenance protocol, there is recent precedent from this board to establish that and require that as part of any condition of approval and condition prior to any building permit being issued of a protocol that gets approved by either or both of the village engineer and the building inspector on the 33 Lily Pond application and the issue of Tides Turn Lane. So I would just ask the board to keep that in mind. So I don't think it's, I don't think it's this poor past practice to just, I'm not trying to say being dismissive, but just to say it's not an issue that we should address because I think it's, I think the history is there to take those concerns into consideration, particularly here where you have, as Mike mentioned, the wetland that's immediately adjacent to the road and the heavy traffic that it's going to pass through.
With all due respect, that doesn't bind this board now to becoming involved in those matters, so.
Well, it's a--
Your point's well taken, and the board will consider it, I'm sure.
Very recent application, so we can agree to disagree on that. And just, we would just like to ask, because of the--
Neither of us vote.
--the extensive, you know, record and the recent submissions that were put in, including additional submissions by the applicant and the village planner yesterday, you know, we would like to have the written record kept open for a couple of weeks to just reply to some of that and get further comments in on the de-watering plan, et cetera, and some of the additional comments and questions that are raised today. Thank you.
Phil?
Yeah, I had one question, and I'm not sure if this goes to Tom or Billy. When the building permit's issued, there'll be a SWIP plan that'll have to be approved, correct, for that wetland?
So right now, the submitted engineering plans, or package, I guess you'd call it, included SWIP details. They're not, the current project does not clear more than one acre. If they do have to de-water, they would have, that would probably put them over the edge of clearing more than one acre, in which case the SWIP would be mandatory, but they have--
Can I interrupt just to ask for those of us newbies, what a SWIP--
Oh, I'm sorry, a stormwater pollution prevention plan. It basically, it's an exercise of establishing the limits of grading, clearing, and also ensuring that there's no dust runoff, everything is contained on site. It determines where materials are stored, things of that nature.
Thank you. Georgia?
I'm Georgia DeHavenon. I live at 48 Briar Patch Road, East Hampton.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
I would say this property, it has been said was acquired at a reduced price because of the variances that would be required. And I think these variances should be adhered to. As, I just want to remind you all, in the 1987 Corps of Engineers Wetland Delineation Manual for the north-central and eastern regions, they determine wetlands as groundwater recharge value, sediment trapping, nutrient trapping, shoreline anchoring, noteworthyness, high-value wetland in urban settings. And I mean, we almost are urban, but Mr. Tarbet, I live in a house that's quite a bit less big than the house they want to build on Briar Patch Road. So that statement is not correct. And I think we should really think about this, that this is a fragile area and it shouldn't be, it shouldn't be not taken seriously, what they want to do. Thank you. I mean, it is being taken seriously, but it should be taken even more seriously.
I hope we're taking it seriously. Spending a lot of time if we're not taking it seriously, so, thank you. Somebody else I speak--
I have a question.
Please.
Hi, please state your name and address for the record.
Barbara Anderson Terry, 97 Briar Patch Road.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Yesterday, there was quite a bit of correspondence that went back and forth, and I just want to tell people that when the Terrys purchased the property from the Phillips, on the Walbridge survey, it said there was a puddle there. It was written in pencil because it just wasn't even a pond. And sometimes it was a puddle, sometimes it was just a marsh where there were tons of mosquitoes. Because the DEC allowed the land across the street to be filled in, as I discussed with Mr. Tarbet, I believe before the Whittles told to me by Ben Karpinski, who can't unfortunately be here now, but he said it was done in the middle of the night. He has no idea why the DEC permitted it, but I believe it is one of the two reasons why we now have a huge pond on our property that is expanding by the minute. The other reason is the road because of the erosion, and Lynn Tishman has pictures. And I know that Save-A-Tree and Bartlett's all have pictures of, over the years, all the trees that have died because they've been sitting in water. But my question to the board is, will you, or take the responsibility, or is it your responsibility, to make sure that when this project is done, our private property is not in even worse condition? My other question is, can we go back to the DEC to see if perhaps that was a mistake? And maybe we open the egress to the pond again? I don't know. I wish I knew more. I read everything I can on wetlands, but I've also read and been told that if you leave wetlands alone, they usually even disappear. Ours are expanding, and we find this very troubling. We tried to rent our house out recently, and the woman wouldn't rent it because she was so afraid of that pond and her children. And I just don't want to see the situation get worse. Of course, we all are concerned about Georgia, the pond, it is one reason we're out here. We love the pond. But I would like to see some concern being raised for the road as well, whether it's private or not. And we have to address the wetland issue. I'm not the expert, but I just wish that you could tell us that when this is all over, you have some responsibility to check the condition of the road, even if it's private. And if we have any reason to go back to the DEC, to see what we can do to make the situation better. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else have anything? Thank you.
Hi.
Morning.
Please state your name and address for the record.
I hurt my arm. Lynn Perkstischman, 126 Briar Patch Road, and I also own the private road.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So this is the third meeting in three months on this matter, as all of us know. But for me, it's been two years since December of 2019, when I learned that the applicant had purchased the property. And I was concerned, and I raised it before, there were a number of issues that happened between me and the applicant, some illegal clearing and some trespassing--
But let's look to the application.
Okay, I'm done.
Okay.
So, a reminder, he's a European real estate developer who already, who lives in Germany and South Africa, and already has a 10,000-square-foot house, which he rents on 19 Ruxton Road, and now wants to build a 6,000-eight-bedroom house. My question, as I asked last time, what's his intent? Is he going to live there? Great. Is he going to rent it out? Not so great. Is he going to sell it and flip it? Really not great. Okay, that's maybe irrelevant also. It's just, it's just bewildering to me that you would consider granting this variance. It's why you would allow a precedence of granting a 75-foot setback when over, I don't know how many years ago it was, where there was 150-foot setback put in place? What's the purpose? I don't understand. Why are rules put in place unless they're going to be upheld? And then others will want to do the same. You set this as a precedent, and I think John Tarbet, maybe in his letter, said that it isn't going to set a precedence because this is so unusual. Okay. I have a feeling it's going to be a problem in the future. You know, he did it, why can't I do it? The applicant was fully aware of the constraints of this property. This is a self-inflicted hardship. He knew exactly what he was buying, and now he wants to bend the rules to build his 6,000-square-foot house. I feel like I and the neighbors, and a lot of them aren't here because they're out of town, they didn't realize it was going to be an in-person meeting, but we've done everything to shed light on this matter and to let you see what it's going to, how it's going to impact on us. As you just said, private road, not my problem. Well, it's going to be my problem. Am I going to hire a policeman to manage the trucks up and down? Anyway, we've written letters to the board, we've spoken at the meetings, we engaged an attorney, we engaged recently an environmental engineer, who I think spoke beautifully. I'm not sure if it's, anything's going to change, particularly to address the de-watering issue. I just want to make a comment about de-watering. I live on the pond. Guess what happens when they cut the pond? They cut it in October and in April, more or less. Last October, they cut the pond, oh wow, the pond is out, isn't that great? We can now walk around, isn't this fun? One week later, the water rose up. Why? Because there was some kind of a hurricane or something, or a wind that pushed all the sand back. And then the trustees don't go out there one second later and, you know, push the sand back in. It took a week, and then the pond went out again. So all these plans about how they're going to de-water when the pond is out for the five odd months, which is hopefully between October and April, it could easily go back in a split second with a high, a nor'easter, either a blizzard or rain. And then what's going to happen to this de-watering, assuming it's going to have to happen? I'm not sure. As you say, maybe it doesn't have to. But I'm concerned, very concerned. So we've gone through great, great expense, financial, great, great financial expense, time, emotional expense, to figure out how to handle this. I just don't know what else to do. I don't know what's motivating your desire to grant this variance. I don't know who's benefiting. It seems like only the applicant, doesn't even live in the United States, and he's never been in a meeting. We are here, he's not. It seems, and I'm almost done, the other day, Mr. Humphrey, thank you very much, was the only one of the board who said he liked driving up the road, he thought it was so quiet and peaceful and a lovely feeling, and my, you know, what I call oil and stone road, but Mr. Tarbet seems to refer to it as a, you know, dirt, narrow road, I think provides a certain sense of sensibility there. In fact, I wasn't going to mention this, but there is a very famous people that live right up the street who have no problem having their little children, little twin children, and their nannies ride up and down the street in golf carts and either even walk up and down, no security, they feel very safe. What's going to happen when this whole construction starts with the trucks and the cars? And even then, I understand people are allowed to, even if you construct within constraints, then what's going to happen when it's built and there's 16 people, eight bathrooms, each equal, eight bedrooms equal 16 people, allegedly? The road, the sensibility of the road is going to change, and maybe that's, maybe that's, then maybe that has to happen. Maybe I'm living in the old world, I don't know. So I would agree, it's a beautiful design, and this applicant amassed an amazing team, a top attorney, a top engineer, a top architect. I'm sure it's going to be beautiful, but my feeling is wrong neighborhood, wrong piece of property, and wrong road. So with all this, I would like you to consider denying the variance, and I thank you for your tireless work. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Joe?
Just quickly, I don't--
Go ahead.
There's a lot to talk.
It clearly has nothing to do with the application, but I take a little offense to referring to my client, who's actually a friend of mine, as not living in the U.S.
Target, Tarbet, you know that it makes no difference.
I understood. I just wanted to mention that he--
Let's stick to the fundamentals.
I understood. I just want to mention that it's because of COVID, right? He'd love to be here this summer, but the rest of the world hasn't been vaccinated, and he's not able to travel here this year, which is why he's not here in person. In case you were going to hold it against him, he wasn't able to make the hearing. As far as, I think the neighbors have sort of made my case for me as far as, you know, they've basically admitted that it is an improvement and that it's a beautiful design. Basically, what their objection is, which the courts call it generalized community opposition, we call it NIMBYism, is that they have theirs, and now they don't want anybody else to infringe on what they have. I've pointed out in my letters that all of the neighbors have a level of development greater than what we propose. They have, they have pool houses, clearing, and lawns, 12,000-square-foot homes. What we are proposing is varying in keeping with the character of the neighborhood and the pattern of development, which is a key term. We are, we are fully seeking to develop our property just like everybody else on Briar Patch Road. The properties were set up before zoning, before the 150-foot setback, and what we're doing is proposing to take a home which is the most non-conforming home on Briar Patch Road, remove it, and make it a more conforming property by relocating our new home to what is in keeping with the existing pattern of development. And the reason for that pattern of development is that when they put 150-foot setbacks into the village code, there simply isn't room to redevelop the whole street and meet that setback. So I think it was entirely reasonable to assume that this home, which we purposely designed to need no dimensional variances and be under allowable GFA, would receive permits. And again, it's a single-family home, so bedroom count is a little misleading, right? We're not going to--
We're not counting bedrooms, so.
Thank you. That's it, thank you.
Question. Mr. Matthews?
I am.
If I-- I assume you're speaking, you're speaking on behalf retained by the collectivity of neighbors around the property.
For the most part, yes.
That's why I want to direct my question to you.
Yes.
And obviously, you know the criteria by which this board has to make its findings. So there are lots of points that have been made by the applicant and by the expert that you retained and by various neighbors. What are, can you just summarize the central nature of the objections and the concerns, just so we have it clear? Because it's not, it's not completely clear to me--
Sure.
--exactly what it is that is considered most problematic, or to the extent that there, because since you are aware, again, of what the criteria are that we have to use to evaluate the application, what in your view would be, or on behalf of your clients, would be the preferred outcome? be, or on behalf of your clients, would be the preferred outcome? Since the applicant is entitled to a fair hearing regarding the use of the property.
Got it. Yes, yes, sir, I can do that. So, under, under New York state law, it's echoed and embedded in the Village Code, these types of area variances, there's multiple levels of analysis that go on. You know, there's, first, you have to look at, you know, whether the granting of the variance, whether preserves the character of the neighborhood and the health, safety, and welfare of the community. And then when you look at, and that's in 278, 278-7C...
What do you want to see, Mr. Matthews? Answer Mr. Rose's question.
I'm answering his question.
What do you want to see? We don't need a recitation of the law. That's okay.
Well, I think that's important, with all due respect.
We know, we know what the laws, and they have a lawyer to advise them. So let's get to the point, and let's...
We were asked about the analysis, we were asked about the impacts, we were asked about the standards in which this has to get reviewed.
What are your objections?
So it was a question about a fair hearing, I think we should be given an opportunity to answer that question. When you look at the, when you look at the specific standards that are embedded in the Village Code and the Village Law, you look at whether or not it'll be an undesirable change of the neighborhood, you look at whether or not the benefit can be sought by some other method feasible for the applicant to pursue, you look at whether or not the area variances are substantial, you look at whether or not the variance will have an adverse impact on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood, and whether it's self-created, right? Those are the five, those are the five standards. Self-created is not necessarily a controlling, in and of itself, depository standard, but it's a standard there nonetheless, so it doesn't get brushed aside. In this instance, to, I think, answer your question, to, I think, clearly answer Mr. Messina's question, what they would like to see is something less, something more in keeping with the constraints of the property. Certainly, nobody's debating whether or not, whether or not the design is beautiful. They do, they're amazing architects, they do, it's a, it's a beautiful design, we're all in agreement on that. But as I mentioned in my initial statement here, not every property is fitting for every type of amenity. And this is something, when you look at the layout of the lot, when you look at the topography, when you look at the water table, when you look at the proximity to the pond, when you look at the wetlands across the street, when you look at the neighborhood as a whole, this is simply just too much for that area. It can be, it can be smaller, and I know, I believe, Mr. Chairman, I heard, you know, you're not counting bedrooms, and I understand that, that that's a septic point, you know, do you have, is your septic right for your bedrooms? But at the same time, eight bedrooms makes the house, makes the house larger. A four-bedroom house, a five-bedroom house doesn't need to be 6,500 square feet. A house that has, that by their, by their own, I believe, admissions, if you want to call them that, the record, you know, you look at the lot, and it's essentially divided up into two areas because it's a sort of semi-hourglass shape. You're either up on the road, in which point, certainly, I don't think we ever saw a building envelope where they could build as a matter of right up there, on any of the surveys, if it's in there, I don't recall seeing it. But I believe there's a house that could be built up there, it may not be the size that they want, and that's okay. So they have the ability, they have this process to come here and ask that, can we do, can we do something in variation of what the code requires and what the code allows, however you want to look at that? But it doesn't mean that, you know, they, they have to, because of the middle shape of the lot and where they want to put the septic, and the septic is all well and good, as we all spoke about, but to get to 75 feet, is it an improvement over what's there now in the abstract from a setback perspective? Sure. Are they, and John went over these numbers before, from a coverage, from a GFA, are they, are they lower than what is allowed under the code in the abstract? Sure, but you cannot look at these numbers in the abstract. You can't just say, JFA is this, coverage is this, and we're under those. Those numbers are for these, the property size as a whole. Then when you take the constraints of the property on top of that, that's where you have to look at this, say, well, does 20% coverage, is that, you know, it doesn't really work? So here, it's simply too much for this constrained lot. It can be moved back, it can be scaled down, it can, the basement can go, maybe the pool has to go. Just because other neighbors have something that's further back and things that were built, sometimes that's the way it goes. Just because the neighboring property has, doesn't mean that you get the same.
So let me ask you in response to that, and thank you for the, at the end, I think you put your finger on one of the things I'm trying to get to, because they, this property does have a certain amount of gross floor area that is, it is entitled to use. The question is how to mass it or locate it within the constraints, and relief is being sought because the property doesn't easily afford it being accommodated, including with the objectives of pond access and the like. If hypothetically, and I'm not proposing this, I'm asking, there were a way to, in effect, split, as I'd say, locate two parts, so one part in the, one part of the hourglass and garage structure or something, is that something that the neighbors would find preferable? As opposed to, so there'd be two structures as opposed to one structure? Or is that...
You know, that's certainly, I don't want to stand here and, without having to see that and speak for them, you know?
Talk to your clients.
You know, right, you understand. But I...
I understand my question, because there's...
I do, and conceptually, and conceptually, sure, that may be something, if that's, if that's less of an impact, if that's less of a burden, you know, you'd have to see what it looked like and look at the numbers, as we've talked about before, and see how it worked, but maybe that is a feat, maybe that's something that is more feasible, maybe that's a more reasonable middle ground. Maybe that is an alternative, as Mr. Bonti mentioned, that, you know, should be, should be vetted a little bit more. I understand the applicant wanting to have this, but you used an interesting word when you, when you were talking about the GFA and an entitlement, and that's what I'm saying. In the code, those numbers are there, a property of X amount of size is entitled to X amount of GFA, in theory. It's not always as a matter of right, when they, and that is illustrated by the fact that, that here we are, asking for, or here they are, I should say, asking for permission to do this. So it's not an entitlement, it's still a request, and a burden is on them to show that they meet all these standards, including the fact that there's something less that they can't do, or that this isn't substantial, or this isn't self-created. And I think that...
Let me, let me, I'm not going to try to play attorney, that's what, we have an attorney to advise us on it, but the point, they are entitled to a certain amount of floor area, gross floor area and coverage pursuant to the size of their property. There are additional constraints that come in the code, and that's why they have come to seek a relief because of the peculiar nature of the lot, given the various other constraints. So that, we have, they do have an entitlement, and they have a right to come and be heard to, so that's what we're grappling with.
No doubt, they have every right, they have every right to be here.
It's not a theoretical right, it's a real right.
Well, no, what I was saying, what I was saying theoretically is that, you know, if you're entitled to just say, you know, say 10,000 square foot of GFA, if you had a lot that you could build on just with a building permit, that's that kind of entitlement as a matter of right.
I understand the point, I just want to be clear in terms of what we're grappling with and questions.
Right.
We have an obligation to try and sort, sort out a solution to a problem.
It's a difficult lot, a difficult application, and certainly, I know everybody here in the room appreciates the board's, you know, taking the time to look at this, but I think to go back very quickly, to circle back of what they would like to see, I think it's just something less, something less impactful to the pond, and something, something less impactful to the, to the neighborhood as a whole. And so maybe we can keep getting there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the board? Anybody, any comments from the public? Philip, Lee? I mean, I don't know what additionally we're going to hear on this, to be honest with you.
Mr. Chairman, do you want to close the hearing and move this to work session?
Let's go to work session.
Yeah, we could, we can close the hearing, we'll go to work session on this.
Close the hearing, reserve decision.
Yep.
Whether or not this works.
Should I make a motion, we close the hearing?
Motion.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, okay. Thank you. Pam, can we move on to the next?
Application of Alan B. and Jackie DePey Mitchell, Sub County Tax Mat Number 301-279.7 for area variances from Chapter 278 zoning to legalize the existing gross floor area and swimming pool equipment, and to legalize and expand coverage. A 413-square-foot variance is requested from Section 278.3A9 to permit 8,671 square feet of coverage, where the maximum permitted coverage is 8,258 square feet. A 671-square-foot variance is requested from Section 278.3A13A to legalize 5,542 square feet of gross floor area, where the maximum permitted gross floor area is 4,879 square feet. A 1.1-foot variance is requested to legalize swimming pool equipment located 28.9 feet from the side yard lot line, where the required setback is 30 feet, and any other relief necessary. The subject property is 38,790 square feet in area and is located at 18 Dayton Lane. This property is located in the Residence District R40, zoning district, and this property is classified as a Type 2 action in accordance with SEQA.
Mr. Tarve?
I wish you could spread these out.
Me, me too.
Took this one more succinct than the last one.
Wish everybody would have stuck around and watched. So this originally came to me as a gross floor area variance, and subsequent to submission of the application, it became apparent that we did not need a gross floor area variance, which greatly simplified the application. This person, the applicant, has owned the property for a long time, it's off of Dayton Lane, although if you think of Dayton Lane, you think of all the small lots, this is actually a one-off, it's a, it's a flag lot, for lack of a better word, behind Dayton Lane, although it has a Dayton Lane address, and it's a much larger lot than the other homes on Dayton Lane. And what happened here is basically a home was built, which is, which under current, current code would be at or over gross floor area and coverage, and once those new laws went into place, it became essentially impossible to add something like an AC condenser or a garbage bin without coming to the board. So there is a request for, actually, exactly that, to add a couple amenities to the property. This is not somebody who's looking to take a property and blow it out, it is, it's simply that over the last 20 years of living on the property, the code has changed, making coverage a real issue, so even things like the AC condenser and a slight patio addition and a garbage bin do put us slightly, 5% or less over allowable coverage, and we're hoping to legalize those issues. The other thing was, at some point, the, the pool pumps were put in a conforming location on the property, somebody decided that it would be much better to have those pumps from a, from a quiet point of view inside the garage. It was relocated inside the garage, and we're looking to legalize that after the fact. In our favor is that it's a 30-foot setback, and I don't have the number in front of me exactly, but I think it's 29.5 feet, so it's a real tiny variance to maintain the pool equipment inside the garage. The other thing going for is...
28.9.
Thank you, 28.9 feet. The other thing going for is, in favor of the applicant, is that the property that we're requesting the variance from, the side yard variance from, is in common ownership, and it's currently vacant, so...
And these are all de minimis variances, right?
They are. Again, it originally had started at something that would have been more significant, but luckily, we do not need a gross floor area variance.
Okay, thank you. I don't have any issue with this application, anybody?
No, not at all.
Mr. Rose, okay, thank you.
I'm done, thank you.
Excuse me? Oh, anybody in the audience have anything?
The public.
Yes, Billy.
I just want to clarify one thing, the allowable coverage in gross floor area has not changed on the property since, prior to 2007.
Okay, so add that to the record, thank you.
Thank you.
I make a motion to close the hearing?
Do you want to vote it?
Yeah.
Do a written decision for next month for you to adopt, okay?
Great, thank you. Do we have a second on that? Jimmy, all in favor? Aye, aye, okay. Pam?
Application of Alfred Ross, Sub County Tax Mat Number 301-12104 for wetlands permit and variance pursuant to Chapter 163, fresh water wetlands, and Chapter 278 zoning to construct a staircase, dock, and storage sling. A wetlands permit in accordance with Sections 163.3 and 163.5, and variances are requested from Section 278.3A8 to construct a staircase, ramp, floating dock, and storage sling within and directly adjacent to wetlands, where a 150-foot setback from wetlands is required. A variance is required from Section 278.1A to construct an accessory structure on property that does not contain a principal building and any other relief necessary. The subject property is 122,338 square feet in area and is located at 33 Cove Hollow Farm Road, is in Residence District R160 and fronts on Georgia Capote. This project requires approvals of the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation and East Hampton Town Trustees, and is classified as a Type 2 action in accordance with SEQA.
Thank you.
May I just say that I'm just...
May I just say that I'm just...
Refuse myself?
Andy, please, thank you.
Hi, good morning, board members. My name is Karen Hoag, I'm with the law firm of Timulate Them Che, and here with me today is Bruce Horweth. This office represents Alfred Ross, the owner of 33 Cove Hollow Farm Road in East Hampton, and Mr. Ross also owns the improved residential parcel at 38 Cove Hollow Farm, which is directly across the street. The project received a New York State DEC permit on May 1st, 2020, and a trustee's permit on December 14th, 2020, copies of which were included as part of the application. The Ross application proposes to install an access stair, ramps, and floating platform to allow them access to safely launch kayaks and canoes on their property. A wetlands permit pursuant to Chapter 163 is needed to construct the staircase, ramp, floating dock, and storage sling within the 150-foot wetland setback, and a variance from Section 278.3.88 is needed to construct an accessory structure on a property without a principal dwelling. The stair system will be constructed using untreated natural tropical hardwood, and will consist of a fixed stair four feet wide that descends approximately six feet dropped from their field to the pond shore. There are two four-foot wide by six-foot long ramps, leading to a four-foot wide by four-foot long floating platform where their kayak or canoe can be attached. The access stair was designed to enable ramps and a floating platform to adjust to the water as the pond level fluctuates, and these will be hand-removed from the pond seasonally and stored in the field. The platforms were designed so that it wouldn't be sitting on the pond bottom during periods of low water, and all work is proposed to be done by hand. The access stair was designed so that there would be no environmental impact, and it won't interfere with the public's access or use of the pond. It should be noted that the proposed access stairs is the same design as approved at 25 Cove Hollow Farm, which is the adjacent property. In regard to the accessory without a primary, and the variance sought from Section 278.1A, the access staircase doesn't fall under the purview of the code intent. The access stairs is not a subordinate use to a residence, such as other structures like a swimming pool, a tennis court, a garage, or a poolhouse, or similar structure, it is really subordinate to the marine use of the pond. The proposed access stairs is to safely access and have recreational use of the pond, and the stairs are minimal in size, and its components are designed for seasonal use. The lot has been, has been owned by the Ross family since 1984, and for over 40 years has remained vacant. They left the property in the natural state without a house, sanitary, and traditional accessory structures, such as a tennis court, pool, all of which they are entitled to have as a right. We are simply asking for this so that the Rosses can safely launch a kayak or canoe and have recreational usage of the pond as owners of this lot and the approved lot across the street. I would think that the board could appreciate this and prefer a staircase with seasonal components that can be removed, rather than have someone drag a kayak or canoe down the embankment and impact the wetland area. We have reviewed the June 30th, 2021 report from Billy Hayjack, and he notes that the staircase and floating platforms appear to be designed to provide for safe pedestrian access down the embankment and as access to the water. Absent this, accessing the water's edge is very difficult and almost impossible. Billy recommended the following conditions in his report, such that the improved pathway within the scenic easement that serves as access to the staircase be no wider than four feet, any woody and wetland vegetation that is removed in connection with the installation of the dock be replaced with similar plantings, and that the staircase and floating sections be constructed of non-chemically treated materials, and that the work to construct and install the staircase and floats be completed using handheld tools and equipment, no heavy machinery. Submission of an as-built survey and written notice to the zoning board upon completion of the work. These conditions are all agreeable to the applicant. One area that we wanted to discuss with the board was the proposed four-foot, or recommended four-foot pathway within the easemake area. While we understand that that's generally a policy, hi Jim, while we understand that that's generally a policy in the village, there's no code provision regarding that, and we would like the board to consider a little bit wider of a pathway so that one can safely have two people carry a kayak and maneuver in order to access the water.
How wide? How big is your help wide?
Six feet.
Thank you.
Thank you. Six feet, I think, would be sufficient for two people to hand-carry a kayak.
What is it now?
Right now, it's... Uh, right now, it's being proposed at four, well, the recommend, the recommendation is four feet.
Kayaks and canoes, but no paddle boards, right?
I, I don't know if they, well, maybe paddle boards, stop, any, no motorboats, how's that?
I'm just jealous of people who could do that.
So there will be no undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties if the variances are granted, and the adjacent neighbors have similar structures located within close proximity to this property. The benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method feasible other than these variances, the waterfront is located at a steep embankment, and there's no safe way to access the water without a stairway. Although improvements will be erected within the wetlands area, it is most minimal, and there is minimal impact on the physical and environmental conditions of the neighborhood, and there are no other alternatives available to provide safe access. The proposed stairs are for passive structure that will not introduce any activity or substances that may be detrimental to wetlands, and we are only seeking to create a safe, stable, and convenient means of access to Georgia Capone for Mr. Ross and his family. More specific details on how this project complies with the village code standards are in the application, and I also have Mr. Horwith here, if you have any questions of him, or if he wants to add anything to the application, and I believe Mr. Grimes is here to also talk about the application.
I just had a quick question. So you're okay with letting the, uh, the path that runs perpendicular along the shoreline come back?
The, what we would like to see is to have the, any areas within the scenic easement to be mowed for six feet, as opposed to the four feet that's recommended.
Well, there's, there's two, there's the trail that comes down from the house, and then there's the
The wide, right.
the one that's running perpendicular.
Parallel.
Or parallel, I'm sorry.
Parallel?
Thank you. Wrong word.
It's my understanding, and Bruce, you can speak to that as well.
Billy, can we leave at six feet?
Yeah, for free access, that's fine.
Okay, and then, um, back to you, Ms. Hoag, uh, we recommend that the storage, Billy, this is Billy's comments, I recommend the storage sling be relocated outside of the scenic easement, are you willing to?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. I, I don't have any issues with this.
Yeah, well, I think in the recommendation was also that the, uh, that the pathway that runs parallel, uh, be allowed to return and not be mowed also, right?
Or relocated outside of the easement.
Yeah. And you're okay with that? Because that's
Bruce Horwith here, um, on behalf, on behalf of the applicant.
You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth?
I absolutely do, yeah. But you've already stolen my thunder, Billy, basically, because, uh, I spoke with the applicant yesterday, who called in preparation for today's meeting, he had seen Billy's comments, and his only request in terms of the things that were being asked was that he be allowed the six-foot pathway, so yes to the answer whether moving the parallel path outside the scenic easement, yes to having the material stored outside the scenic easement, uh, just asking for the six-foot pathway, so.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Grimes, any comments?
Yeah.
Jim, James Grimes, East Hampton Town Trustees, and yes, for the most part, I intend to tell the truth.
Ready to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Which part? Depends. No, yes. Um, hey, my, the trustees' only comments on this, I believe this is an application we've actually already approved for the walkway down to the, down to the water. My only comments and requests from this board on this application and future applications, what I did witness a few weeks ago was a pesticide applicator operating within seventy-five foot of a wetland, which is a violation of DEC law unless they've got a wetland permit for that application, certainly operating within a hundred-and-twenty-five feet of the wetland, that some language be installed in these management plans on these scenic easements, wetland buffers and that, that basically spells out that if you have intentions of managing an invasive species, that there is a complete narrative as to this target species, the means and methods proposed to manage those species, because Bill and myself and the town, we frequently find ourselves in a situation where you have these somewhat unenforceable violations, simply because they fell between the cracks when it came time for the permitting.
Could the trustees not impose that as condition of their permit?
Well, we would, but, but please understand this, everything within this application, with the exception of the walkway where it can contacts Georgia Capone, is outside of trustee jurisdiction.
Understood, but you still have some jurisdiction in the
Well, we only have jurisdiction in the sense that we can perhaps coerce or leverage an applicant to do a better
Persuade, sir, persuade.
Persuade, thank you. I, I didn't know the proper legal term.
Coerce will get you into trouble. It's a little free advice for you.
That's what you're here for. Well, thank you. That we can, that we can persuade applicants to, to more or less do the right thing, and, and you know, here, it's not that we have an issue with the control of the invasive, the target invasive, the only issue is, how are we doing this? And for this board's benefit, and for the community's benefit, to understand, you know, the ways and means, and make sure that everything's operating on the up and up.
Duly noted.
Thank you.
We got it.
Thank you. But I, uh, I think this is a reasonable law. They've done a very nice job, Dan, it is great stand of, uh, common milkweed. We, for the first time in five years, we had a great population of monarchs breeding there the other day. It's a good thing, and thank you.
Thanks, Jimmy.
Can we ask our distinguished counsel to confer, to, or use his good offices to confer with trustees and the planner to try to come up with some kind of appropriate language? If it's
Whatever the board's pleasure.
Please. So I make a motion to close the hearing?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I should say, do I have a motion? Um, okay, so let's move on to the last hearing of the day. Thank you, Pam.
Application of Wong Yon Austin, Sub-County Tax Act Number 301 826 for area variances from Chapter 278 zoning to construct a poolhouse within an existing accessory building slash barn. Variances of fourteen-point-two feet and eleven feet are requested from Section 278 3A5C to construct a poolhouse within an existing garage that's located fifteen-point-eight feet from the side yard lot line and nineteen feet from the rear yard lot line, where the required setbacks for a poolhouse are thirty feet and any other relief necessary. The subject property is thirty-two thousand eight hundred eighty-four square feet in area and is located at ninety-nine Beale Lane in Residence District R40. This project is classified as a type-two action in accordance with SEQA.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, I'm Adam Ben Jon Tarver and Lester, representing the homeowner, uh, who's here this morning as well. Um, basically, what we're trying to do here is put a small poolhouse within an existing barn, it's a historic property, so the idea here is to limit disturbance as much as possible and fit a poolhouse into this existing barn that's been there for storage for many years. The poolhouse is a hundred and ninety square feet, so it meets dimensional requirements, and it could be added into a storage structure as of right if the storage structure met the setback for the poolhouse. The structure does meet the accessory setbacks, just not the doubled poolhouse, but we have put, located the poolhouse on the side of the structure that's closest to the pool and furthest from the side neighbor, so to minimize the impact from anyone. Basically, all we're trying to do is get a poolhouse here without adding any more structures to the property, and I can answer any questions.
Anybody else in the audience like to speak? Philip?
Yeah, so, I mean, it's substantial variance, it's self-created, the village changed the code several years ago, I, I can't remember Billy, my, where, um, they didn't want poolhouses located within a, a garage or a, um, or, or shed because they were morphed, they morphed into larger than, um, than the poolhouse.
Well, it is specifically allowed in village code to
They changed it back?
construct a poolhouse within a garage, as long as there's no internal entrance, so that is specifically allowed in code, actually, so.
And, and your point is that this mitigates potential visual impacts by placing it inside the historic structure?
Exactly, we wanted to use the barn that was already there, but if the barn met poolhouse setbacks, it's allowed by village code to carve out a poolhouse within a structure. Yeah.
Don't worry, they'll change.
And, and, you know, on the CO from, uh, Pam gave me the, it's a CO from nineteen, nineteen ninety, that's it, that was
The bottom.
Yeah. The most current CO on the house, or?
I know, that's an older
It's an older one. Um, they call the barn a two, uh, two-story frame, two-car garage with a second-floor storage. Tom, correct me, but don't you have to have a driveway to a garage?
You do, Mr. Tarver.
Okay.
I believe that was an error on the, on that CO at that time, it's not ever been a garage, it's always been a, a barn, a storage barn.
Well, this is from nine, this is from
If I may, if I may, the, the, um, that requirement is, is fairly recent.
Okay.
So I think, at the, at the time the issuance, this CO, at the time the CO was issued, I don't believe the driveway was required.
Jimmy, anything?
So this, um, this building is going to remain a storage shed?
Yeah, the remainder of the building will be, will remain storage.
And there is no access from the garage or a storage shed to the poolhouse, correct?
No, there's a wall inside, no access interior.
And we, we would like to have some kind of inspection yearly, so it remains a, remains a poolhouse.
With no interior access?
Right.
Okay, I don't, Mr. Rose?
Okay.
Okay.
Greg?
Oh, it's a beautiful property, and it's going to stay that way, this, by putting